Okay, good evening. I have six o'clock. Today is April 12th, 2023, and I'm going to call the City Council to order. If you will please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll wait for you, Nick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call. I'll start with you, Councilman Owen. Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, we have a couple presentations tonight. The first is the Cedar Woolley Academy. We've had, we went eight weeks, and it was an opportunity for the directors of each department and also some council members, Councilwoman Lavaca was there, and Councilwoman Burns, to talk about exactly how our government works here within the city and how each of the departments run. And some of them, we asked if they would be willing to come forward and talk about it. They said they would. So I see a couple of them here. I see Jody, I see Tony. So anybody, would you like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Jenny Morales, and I just...
Is there, why don't you push the button on the, yeah, there you go.
Hello, I'm Jenny...
Perfect. Thank you, Jody. Yeah, thank you.
This is my daughter, Madeline. Yes, I'm here just to talk about the eight-week program that the city offered for us to get kind of a sneak peek of the operations, day-to-day operations, and the individuals that do the work for the city. And it was exactly what I was hoping to get, just kind of an idea of how the city works, who all is involved, the responsibilities that they have, and just how they work together in collaboration. And it was very eye-opening. We have a really good city that's ran here. I think, I can confidently tell anyone that I run into that we have our stuff together. Like every city, there's things that need to be improved. But I think overall, there's a really good grasp of everything that's going on, from utilities, public, to the fire and police stations. So it was a really great opportunity, and I just want to say thank you for allowing everyone to do it and the time, because I know that you guys are all very busy people. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Jody. Bye, Madeline. Hi, Tony.
Is this button still on? There we go. I'm Tony Finch. I'm a transplant to Cedar Woolley, and I participated in the eight-week Cedar Woolley Academy, and it was a great experience. I've had opportunities to live in larger towns like Portland and Seattle and Washington DC. But really, I learned when I was a youngster in rural Wyoming that communities always work better when there's engagement. And when I was a young kid and we were ranchers, we all shared in maintaining the cemetery and the phone lines. And so as I grew up, I became involved in communities where I was, wherever I was, either on school boards or community service organizations or volunteering in other ways. And so when we moved to Cedar Woolley, I was just looking to say, to learn more about the towns where I lived and how we might be able to be involved. So I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and to Charlie, Administrator. Pretty gutsy to do this the first time around and hope somebody showed up. Fortunately, people did, and we had a great time. All of the departments really, you know, took time from their schedules, preparing and coming and listening to a thousand questions and fielding them well. And we appreciated that. And I hope there's some side benefits to the city as well, because as the people that work here and the departments that lead the work, I think they might have realized too that there were people that were interested, and they wanted to know what was going on. And I think at the end of all of it, that they were highly appreciated. So one of the things that we learned was that for a city this size and the departments that function together, there's a lot of partnerships. There's a lot of teamwork. But as departments work together, you know, on the 20-year plan, it can be kind of mundane from day to day. But to actually come together and recognize that there's people that are interested, that want to know, that are willing to become engaged if there's opportunities and needs, I think that the side benefit could be that maybe those department leaders and the people that came and presented to us could be encouraged. So thank you for doing it. Hope there's more of them. I know that there will be, maybe one or two a year. But I think that momentum will grow as this kind of a program is fostered. Thank you.
Yeah, and we appreciate the feedback that you gave, too. I think based upon that, we probably will do one about the same time next year. So, yep, thank you, Tony. Marcel, hello.
How's it going?
Good. I heard you provided a tour yesterday.
I did, yes. Hi, my name is Marcel Quanga. I am the Program Director at the Boys and Girls Club in Cedar Woolley. Kind of my experience with the Cedar Woolley Academy is something brand-new to me, and I've never seen like how cities work. And I, this is my first year in Washington, so it was great to see how everything functioned and how like unified everyone is. And like seeing that shows me how great Cedar Woolley is and the potential that Cedar Woolley has to offer everyone here. But, yeah, I mean, I can't, they already said everything that was great about it. But I look forward to working with you guys, see how the Boys and Girls Club can help out the community. I already talked to Charlie about it. But yeah, if you guys have any opportunities that the Boys and Girls Club can help with, Charlie has all my information, and we're more than glad to help and vice versa. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Marcel. Chris? I'm putting you on the spot there. I saw you just, I saw you just walk in.
Late. Hi, Chris, a graduate of the Cedar Woolley Academy. Just want to say thanks to Charlie and Mayor Johnson. That was really great. I really appreciate the time they took to put it on, as well as all the department heads participating. I learned a lot. I've lived in big cities most of my life, and first time living in a small city, and really only, it's been a couple years in Washington. And I think this is a really important program, especially as the demographics of small towns change, as more people move away from the cities and to smaller towns like I have, and like a lot of people are doing right now. It really helps to provide some much-needed perspective for citizens. Listening to the passion and dedication of the Public Works Team, of really everyone, and hearing about struggles and the needs, budgets, all those kind of things, really, really, really helps solidify the needs of the community, what everyone does. And I think that's a really powerful thing, and I think you should continue.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Thank you all for coming in. We greatly appreciate it. There was 10 in all, and there's a couple letters that I put on, in front of you, that actually came in from Dean and from Mike, who were also part of the Cedar Woolley Academy, sharing what they thought. And they were a dynamic team. So for as much as maybe they learned and pulled information out of, we did the same. It was so what they shared with us, especially at the end, the last night where we kind of did a debrief, that was powerful and it was really important. So greatly appreciate that. Also, you gave us a lot of hope, because sometimes we never know. Most of the time, we, the chairs are empty. We're talking, we're talking to an empty, empty chairs. But so most of the time, we don't know really how the public is responding. So to hear your perspective and with the diversity that you all came in with, that was really important to us. And I think it's going to help us be a stronger city and better, better able to serve those who live within our community, especially as we grow. So thank you again for doing that. All right, I think I covered all of that. Charlie, do you want to put, I'm going to let you speak too.
Yeah, I could definitely speak briefly on the topic. So we did a post survey with the participants of the program. As the mayor mentioned, there were 10 people participated in the program. I just wanted to give you three bullet points from that post survey that we did. It was a relatively short survey. Folks that we surveyed felt the length, the content, and the size of the cohort was just right for them. They reported, 75% of the participants reported they're more committed to being involved in the community as a result of the program. And 50% of them said they're more likely to serve on a board or commission or even to run for an elected office as a result of their participation in the program. So those are a few nuggets from the program. Our goals were, you know, to help people engage in the community and to help people potentially help fill some of our roles here at the city. So pretty excited with those results. We had eight respondents out of the 10 participants.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Again, greatly appreciate you coming in, really. I actually greatly appreciate the opportunity to have met you and get to know you better. So thank you. So moving on to the next item under Presentations, we have General Manager George Sidoo from the Skagit County PUD District. And also here is one of the newly-elected Commissioners, Corinne Hamburg. Welcome, Corinne. So thank you, George, for coming in. I know you do this once a year, and I appreciate the update.
Yes, it's my pleasure to come in. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening, it is now. Yeah, I try and do this with the cities and the county at least once a year to give a PUD update, just let you know what kind of projects we're working on, what initiatives we have going on, and also allow the opportunity for a conversation and for you to ask questions as well. So like the mayor said, my name is George Sidoo. I'm the General Manager at Skagit PUD. And I'll take about 20 minutes of your time for some slides, and you've got some new TVs now, so they're a little distracting. I'm used to looking over there. And so feel free to interrupt me as I'm going. If you have questions, I'll try to answer them on the spot. And also, if you have other ones, we can address those at the end as well. Yeah, so go ahead, Bill. Next slide. And I'll start off with just an overview. The mayor mentioned our new Commissioner. So we have three Commissioners. They each serve six-year terms. And the, our Commissioner districts, because we're a countywide organization, they overlap with the County Commissioner districts. So Commissioner Hamburg, who's here today, she, her district is Cedar Woolley and Upriver as well. So thank you for being here, and you know, it's good to, good to have the local Commissioner as part of these presentations. So that's the makeup of our board currently. There's some statistics about our organization. We, we have about 80, 84 employees that work for us, and our primary job is to provide water to our customers. And you probably saw an article in the paper recently, and Mayor Johnson was kind enough to send an email to us, but we won a local best tasting water competition. And I won't get into all the details, but there's organizations, sub-organizations of American Waterworks. And so there's a local one that competes, and the winner of that one goes to a larger one, and then the winner of that one goes to the national competition. So we did win locally with a sample from Marble Mount, and the Judy system came second, and that's who serves the city here. So fingers crossed, we'll go to, the subsection conference is in early May in Kennewick, and so we'll find out how we fare there. But we, we do serve, as the statistics show, just over 80,000 people and 27,000 services in our eight water systems countywide. Yeah, I think that's it for that. Next slide, Bill. One of the things that we did last year was update our strategic plan. So the first time we ever did a strategic plan was back in 2018. And that was a really good guiding document for us. It helped focus us on our financial obligations and our projects. And that ran its course. We did an update last year that took effect starting this year. So a lot of the slides I'm going to give you are related to that plan, because we try and use that plan every day in making decisions for our organization. And this is, it's not directly in our plan, but it's something that I want to highlight is our fire maintenance agreement with the city. So that's something I think you all are familiar with. I worked with Charlie and with Frank last year, and we have an agreement where, between the City of Cedar Woolley and the PUD, where we maintain all of the hydrants within the city. Now, this is something that we've done with the City of Mount Vernon as well recently. And it's important to us because the hydrants are connected to the water system. And there's an opportunity for intrusion of contaminants into the water system if the hydrants aren't maintained to certain standards. I'm not saying that any fire departments weren't doing it correctly, but it's just, it makes it easier, and we want to be the responsible ones for doing the maintenance. And so we have started doing that, starting this year within the City of Cedar Woolley. We have, as it says, there are a total of 429 hydrants within the city. And the agreement is that we're going to cycle through all the hydrants every five years. So we'll do 20% maintenance on 20% of the hydrants every year. And that gets us on a five-year cycle. And the goal is for, when the fire department comes up to a hydrant, the intent is for it to be operational. So there should not be any hydrants that are bagged or unoperational within your system. That's the goal that we have in doing the maintenance. There's some stats there about some of the hydrants, the average age and the oldest hydrant. One thing to note, so there were eight fire hydrant locations that we identified that needed some immediate work. There are some repairs needed and four need replacement. Now, the, the one thing that came out of the pandemic that impacts us the most is supply of equipment that we use and materials. And we haven't been able to get to the, the replacement of those hydrants just yet. Some hydrant parts are 10 months out. You'd be surprised at the kinds of delivery times we've been getting on materials. And we just got a shipment of new meters in for new services that was, I think it was ordered about a year ago, and we just got delivery. So the upshot is we're going to obviously do all the things that are in the agreement. It's just taking a little bit longer to get to them. On the flip side, the 20% that we are going to maintain every year, we're already done with that. We did 20% maintenance of hydrants already. And we do those in the springtime, because that's best for us, so that in the summertime, we can go back and, and paint them. So you'll see the hydrants that we worked on get a fresh coat of paint in the summertime. So that's how we try and cycle them. All right, next slide, please. So this gets to our strategic plan and some of the investments we're making. And we are in a period of heavy capital investment. We're replacing a lot of our infrastructure. And I'll show you, I'll talk about that in some upcoming slides. But our 10-year capital plan, as you see there, there's $155 million investment. And in just a three-year period, last year, this year, and next year, we're looking at almost $90 million. We've got some big projects on the go and in the, in the hopper to be started. And it's, there's some projects that had been deferred over time, and so we're, we're playing a little bit of catch-up, but also trying to replace things before they prematurely age and, and become out of service. So that's a big focus of ours, is our capital investment on our pipeline and our infrastructure. Next slide describes how that money's been used. So as you can see, this is an average residential bill. So we looked at all of our customers and averaged out how much water they use. And the total bill for a customer in our Judy system is about $135. And remember, that comes every two months, not every month. And so about half of that is used to fund our major capital program. And then you see there's 27% on operation maintenance. We have a pipe replacement program as well. And then the remainder is for debt service and some smaller capital projects, and also we do pay some taxes. But the majority of every customer's bill is going to our major capital program. So that's always a good, good slide to show, because we have been doing 5% rate increases for the last three years, and actually, four years, and next year is another planned 5% rate increase in order to get us over this large hump where we're doing all this capital work. But that is where the rate money is going. All right, moving on. So this is a really hard-to-seem app, but it's our biggest capital project that we've undertaken. And it is a replacement of our main transmission line from Judy Reservoir into the City of Mount Vernon. Yeah, I apologize for, maybe you can see it better on the TV. The dash line shows the route of the water line, and it's roughly along the same alignment as our existing pipe. The existing pipe is 55 years old. It was built in the late 60s, and it's experiencing, has experienced leak and break issues over the last eight years. So we are just about done with 5.3 miles of new 36-inch diameter welded steel pipe. So that's going to be a 100-year pipe for supply of water from Judy to Mount Vernon and all the community south. The project has gone well. We've got a really good contractor, Scarsella, and we plan to have this, about half of this pipe is in service currently, and the rest of it should be in service this summer. And I'll, the, the part of the project that isn't done, it starts on this next slide here, which is probably something that you've seen. There is a portion of this project which goes across Nooka Champs Creek. It was right down by the intersection of Highway Nine and College Way. I'm sure you've all seen that pipe strung out along that field, right? So this is what's going on there. And I talked about this last year, but we're doing about 2,000 feet where we are not open cutting the Nooka Champs Creek. We're going under the creek. And with the 36-inch diameter welded steel pipe. So it starts, the, the drilling company starts on the east side of the creek, and they go under at a depth, the new depth is going to be about 40 feet, and it'll come up on the west side, and it'll go across College Way and tie into our existing pipe there. So that's the plan, that's the design. Now, the next slide is probably what people have been looking at for quite some time. That pipe is there. When I was here last year, I talked about how this pipe is going to go in imminently. You know, it was that month it was going to go in. The contractor drilled the hole, they attempted to put the pipe in the ground, and it didn't go through. It got stuck about 700 feet in. We have our opinion as to why it didn't go in. The contractor has their opinion. That's beside the point. We'll argue about that later. We're just trying to get the pipe in the ground to get the project complete. And so for the last eight months, we've been going back and forth with the contractor, trying to get things all ready to go. The pipe has been ready for, I think, about four months now, sitting there. It's all welded up. The pictures, just, these are the pictures from the first time they tried it, but it's all the same. They weld every single joint inside and out, and we're hoping to make another attempt at installing this pipe this month. And huck on wood, if that goes okay, that's the last, you know, part of the project that's going to be challenging, and then we'll finish up the connections on each end. So that, that intersection where that pipe is, it gets about 15,000 people driving by every day. And I'm sure almost all of them ask themselves, well, I wonder why that pipe is still sitting there. So if you have questions, you know, feel free to ask. If there's any other details about that that you're interested in, feel free to ask me any questions. Does it, does it, who drives by that pipe every day? Okay, two. That's it, okay. Anything come up? Yeah, yeah, I've talked about it before. So I, it's just interesting, because it's there. It's very public. It's very noticeable. But it will not be above ground when we're done. It will be under the creek. You won't see any pipe, and everything will work great. This is another project that we're planning on getting starting, started later this year. Our current headquarters is on Freeway Drive in that building. Part of it is, well, part of it was constructed around that same time as that first pipeline was, in the 60s. And the building is, we've outgrown the building. It needs a lot of maintenance. We can't remodel our existing building, because remodeling kicks in a bunch of other code requirements. So what we are doing is building a new admin building on our property that we own on Freeway Drive. We have 16 acres there, and we're going to build a new admin building. It's that orange rectangle in the top left-hand corner, and the blue buildings are what we currently occupy. So we're hoping to break ground this fall with completion in two years. All right, moving on. One really neat project that we completed a couple of years ago is the installation of a microhydroturban inside one of our pipes to generate electricity. And so this is just some literature that appeared in some publications. But we, I talked about this last year, I think, as well, but this, we're hoping to do one more of these. And so what it is, we had a, we have a pump station at, in Mount Vernon at Division Street. So there's a new tank there, if any of you are familiar with Mount Vernon up on the hill, Division Street and Digby. There's a brand-new tank that was built in 2018. And at that location, we used a pressure-reducing valve to burn or release a lot of our pressure that we had in the system in order to serve our customers. Pressure-reducing valves burn pressure, and they reduce the pressure to serve customers, but it has no value. Like it just goes away. Installing that microhydroturban inside our pipes allows us to generate power that we can then use on-site to operate some of the pumps that we have. So we installed this in 2018, and we generate about $1,000 worth of electricity every month, which offsets our power consumption on that site. And it's been working great. We've gotten a lot of recognition for that project nationally, because it's not a very common project. But we're hoping to do one more, also within the City of Mount Vernon, near the high school. And we've got all the right people. We've got the right product. This product has been really low maintenance, and we're hoping to, again, use some of the power to offset power costs for either ourselves or maybe a neighboring parcel. So why aren't there any in Cedar Woolley, right? I'm sure that's a question that's coming up to you. So in 2011, we did an initial study on locations in our system where we could install something like this. And they have to generate enough power, number one. They have to be cost-effective, and there has to be demand somewhere nearby to make it worthwhile. And so most of them ended up being in the City of Mount Vernon. There are some up near our Judy Reservoir where it has potential. There was one in Cedar Woolley off of, I think, Rhodes Road, that we have a pressure-reducing valve there as well. If the costs keep coming down on units like this, those sites become more feasible, but they're not as feasible right now, because it's an underground pressure-reducing valve. And so if we were to have to build a building and, and repipe a whole bunch of stuff, that's when it starts getting really expensive. This project was pre-piped to accommodate this, so it didn't really cost us that much. And that's why it was really successful. So we're really proud of it. We're proud of all the publicity we've gotten. If you go to the next slide, Bill, we were featured on a CBS show called Innovation Nation, where they, it's on YouTube now, where they go through the explanation of this. So if you do a search on YouTube, you can, you can find a really good short story about that project. And that's it for now. Yes?
Got one question. Question. Every time I go to Mount Vernon, I go by that, across that Nooka Champs Creek, and I see those two cement foundations, and I see the big hole, and I thought, well, maybe the pipe's going to go straight, straight. What are those foundations?
Are you talking like up on Highway Nine, near the gravel pit?
Yes.
So there is a, there's a, going to be a bridge there, a pedestrian bridge, and the water line will go where you're talking about, between the foundations.
Yeah.
So there, from Big Rock up to Clear Lake... So there, from Big Rock up to Clear Lake, we are partnering with Skagit County. And so there's an old railroad grade that runs on the west side of Highway nine. So our pipe is going in the railroad grade. And the county's going to come in afterwards and surface that trench restoration and create a trail. So we have to cross that part of the creek and we're going to put a pedestrian bridge there. It's just taking, we're just waiting for the fabricator to finish the construction of the bridge. And that should go in, I think, in May. Yeah.
It's actually the Centennial Trail, the one that runs up from Snohomish County. Yeah, so, yeah.
Most of that trail is cleared and looks really good because our pipe's already in it. It's just that little piece that's missing.
Any other questions? Yes?
The line running to Cedar Woolley that's servicing our area, what's the condition of that? Longevity, capacity?
Yeah, good question. That line was put in about the same time as the one going to Mount Vernon. It runs, it goes across Skagit River on that suspension bridge. And so I'll use that as a dividing line. Everything north of that, like as it travels through Cedar Woolley, was bedded in sand. And that's really good for our pipe. We've had no issues with that pipe because of those conditions. The problem with the pipe in Mount Vernon was that we found there's a lot of places where the bedding was cobbles and boulders and, and things that weren't really good for the pipe. And so over time, it worked its way into the, through the coating and into the pipe and it caused leaks and breaks. That hasn't happened to the pipe that's going into Cedar Woolley. The one part of it that is more challenging is between the suspension bridge and Judy Reservoir, that really steep hill that goes up the bank. That pipe did break in 2015 and we replaced all of it. So that's new pipe, that's welded steel pipe now, that's going to have 100-year life. So it's, we're going to evaluate it. The size, the capacity of it, it meets our demands for now. We try to look ahead 50 years and it's kind of hard to look ahead that far. But it's, it's not imminent where we have any capacity concerns. The condition of it is, from what we know, just based on leaks and breaks, is okay. But we're going to do a condition assessment on it in the next, I would say, the next three to five years after we're finished with this other pipe.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Good question.
I've got one more question. Couple of years ago, the council had a tour through the Judy Reservoir. Would it, I mean, we've got new council members, would it be possible to organize another tour through that?
Yes, that's a really good question as well. So during the pandemic, we stopped having school tours up at the treatment plant in the reservoir. And we stopped public tours and we used to have elected officials tours. That's the one you're talking about. We're starting those up again this year. So first comes the public tours and they will start in May. So we haven't put the information on our website, but we're going to have a sign-up where anybody from the public, just general public, can go up there. And that was really popular four years ago. So we're going to do that. And then later this summer, we will plan elected officials tours. And there will be emails going out to everybody to try and coordinate that. Please, thanks for the reminder.
Madam Mayor, if I may? Thank you very much for doing all of that. I just had a question, two questions. One about the fire extinguishers that we're having serviced here in Cedar Woolley. So you guys found eight that needed to be repaired out of roughly 80, 90 that you guys looked at. Is, is that sound pretty reasonable for what we anticipate over the next four years? And are you guys replacing any of the wooden piping that's down there as well? Or is that in the plans for, for doing that?
So there's about 430 hydrants total in the city of Cedar Woolley. And we did an initial assessment before we did, finished the agreement. And that's when we found those eight. We found four that needed a replacement and four that needed some repairs. That's actually pretty good, that's not that bad. We were concerned that there was going to be a lot more because there, there's some old hydrants in Cedar Woolley. You know, just over time, they just never got replaced. So that's not too bad, actually, in terms of the percentage of the total number of hydrants. But as we investigate, if we have to, and when we replace them, if we see anything that requires us to do more work than what was originally planned, we'll, we'll get that done as well. There are some hydrants, and you probably noticed it as you go around town. So at the bottom of a hydrant, there's a flange with a bunch of bolts on it. And that flange is supposed to break away if somebody hits it. It's a breakaway flange. And over time, just the ground around fire hydrants builds up and builds up. And there's some hydrants that you have in town that, that flange is either at grade or even below grade. And so those hydrants need to be raised up. That's not included in those eight that I mentioned. But that's the kind of work that we're looking at doing to make sure that the hydrants perform the way that they're supposed to perform. So those are the kinds of work that we're doing. We don't have any intent, intentions on, on digging up anything underground unless we find a need to. And then we will.
As far as wells going up, upriver and, and people being able to have those wells, has there been any changes with that that you know?
So not, I brought a slide because I thought there might be a question about this. I don't want to get into a whole bunch of detail. I could talk to you specifically if you wanted to. But Department of Ecology opened up some areas upriver to allow for additional well development. So Bill, if you go forward, not this one, this one, again, it's hard to see. So they looked at, you know, starting here in Cedar Woolley, and they looked at the Skagit River going upstream. So on the left side of this image is the city of Cedar Woolley and it's going upriver as you go to the right. You can see that the red versus green. And so this was done back in 18, I think, where Department of Ecology looked at a bunch of places upriver and designated some areas where wells could be drilled. And those are highlighted in green. There's restrictions around them, they can't be too close to any tributaries of the Skagit. There's a couple of other criteria. So there's not a complete shutdown of well development upriver. You just have to fit into this map. Not everybody can do that. As you notice, the green areas don't start until you get, you know, quite a ways upriver. I think it's not until you get into concrete, probably. So this is a map that, again, I can go over it in more detail if you like. This has been in place, I think, since 2018. I don't know if a lot of people have taken advantage of this. You know, it's not something that we made or are in control of. This is all through Ecology and the county, I think, helps to manage this as well. But there is some opportunity for well drilling upriver, it's just limited.
So does PUD have any plans to take pipe east of Cedar Woolley?
I've been asked that question quite a bit. And hydraulically, it's nearly impossible to get water from our Judy system upriver. Again, there's a lot of detail involved, but to pump, because it's all going uphill. So you'd need reservoirs and pumps and reservoirs and pumps and you'd have to daisy chain and try and get water upriver. And the cost of something like that would be enormous. So that's not, we've looked at that and we've penciled it out and it's not really cost-effective. There are water systems as you go upriver. The town of Lyman has one, town of Hamilton, town of Concrete. We own and operate one at Rockport and at Marble Mount, Cedar Grove and Skagit Village, we own and operate those. It's, it's going to require those systems growing in order to accommodate customers that are nearby.
And then I have one last question. So I've been sitting here trying to recall, I believe you did share this in one of our quarterly meetings and maybe last year as well. But you spoke of a, a water system, which is just east of Cedar Woolley. For those people who need extra water, I believe for farming or for their farm animals or, I'm not?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I got a slide on that too. Bill, I think if you go forward one more. There. So we've got bulk water fill stations.
Yes.
So we've got three of those around the county now where if people need it for farming, if they need it for filling their well. Sometimes wells go dry in the summer and people rent tankers and they go and fill their well. Or if they've got some other need for a large volume of water. We have a bulk water fill station located on Minkler Road.
Yes.
And so that is up and running. It requires you to come into the PUD, set up an account and you get basically a debit card that you go there, punch it in. There's a keypad on this, you can see that little blue box. You punch in how many gallons you want, you swipe the card and it deducts the amount from the card and you're able to fill it. There's nobody there, you just do it on your own. But we have one in Conway, one up at Bow Hill, and like I said, one at Minkler Road. And they've been successful. The people that use them, use them regularly. And so that tells us there's a need. And we're looking at other places to install them as well because that doesn't cover nearly everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just one quick question. Since a lot of our growth seems to be going north, how far do you go up on Duke's Hill to this point?
Now you're challenging my knowledge of the, the water system map. We have service up Highway nine. There's a school up there, right? There's an elementary school, I think it stops just before that. So not, and regardless of what direction we're going in, our system grows through development. As customers require water service, whether it's for a new house, a development or anything, that's what funds the expansion of our system. So we don't have any plans on expanding the system unless there's a need for it. And then that need pays for that growth. But currently, it stops somewhere up just before that school. Because I know, there was a question, so now, there was a question about not having fire flow at that school, right? Did that come up last year? Okay, somebody brought that up to me. Maybe it was a county commissioner brought that up to me last year. But yeah, we don't, we don't have any lines even approaching the school.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you very much for coming in and sharing information with us. The update's always great, it's always helpful and it's, it's good for us to be able to share that with our constituents as well.
Yes.
So, which is important. So we appreciate the partnership, we really do, it's a great partnership. Still appreciating the ballpark that you gave us, down by the river, down by the park. Thank you very much, once again, from the city.
Well, I like coming here, you guys always ask the best questions, whatever any of the cities. So just so you know. But feel free to get my contact information if you have anything else that you want to ask. The mayor has it, Charlie has it. If there's anything else that you think about, let me know.
All right, thanks again, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne, for coming in. All right. Okay, moving on, next item on the agenda is staff reports. And we are going to receive a fire levy update, is that you, Chief?
Just a quick intro for the chief. But yeah, Chief Wagner's going to provide this report. Just a little bit of background, we are preparing the ballot language for the fire levy lid lift that we talked about about four weeks, six weeks ago. And as we're going through that, we're also thinking about council comments and things we've heard. And some of what we heard from council was desire to try to reduce call volume. Find ways to, to do that, to, to help educate the public or work with the public, work with folks who are repeat customers of the system. And so we've done some studying about paramedicine and community paramedicine programs. And Chief Wagner's going to talk with you about that a little bit. The reason we're bringing this up now is there's a possibility of starting a small program here in Cedar Woolley that could help us accomplish some of those goals of, of dealing with repeat customers, trying to reduce some of those chronic issues and get people resources to alleviate this system. So in the long run, we think it could be a real benefit. And we wanted to talk to council about it before we finalized ballot language and brought it to you. So, Chief Wagner.
And thank you, council. Like Charlie had said, we've been kind of brainstorming some of this stuff and I've talked to some of you individually. Councilman Lavaca gave me some great feedback and some questions that I went out and researched. And looking back at the last couple of years, like a lot of our partners in the, in the county, we're seeing some of the same common patients over and over again. And like we've talked about before, the liability, you can't just say you're not going to go. But looking at some of the numbers, this last year, we did over 3,600 calls. And 10 of the individual patients that we see made up 172 of those calls. And these are our folks that, you know, the, the number one, we did over, almost 40 calls to that one individual patient and only transported nine times. So each one of these calls takes up, you know, an hour, hour and a half, sometimes two hours. And then you add in the reporting of, of the, the call and getting it into our systems to be compliant with our contracts and to cover ourselves for liability and the wear and tear on the vehicles. And with that, we've, we're finding that a lot of these other agencies and throughout the nation are countering this with this mobile integrated healthcare, community paramedicine, Cares programs. All, a lot of different names for the same program. Anacortes has been doing this for about a year, year and a half. They kind of piloted it on their own and have really reduced a lot of the call volume for some of these folks that don't need the emergency room services. And with us, with everybody having the staffing issue in the region, from nursing homes to hospitals to emergency services, it, it's kind of a ripple effect that affects everybody. Where here, we're, we're having wall times with their calling of how long it takes to drop off a patient at a hospital, sometimes 30, 40 minutes, which, you know, five, six years ago, it was a five minutes in, five minutes out. You give a report, you're, you're grabbing new sheets and you're ready to go to the next call. That's not the case because we don't have the beds available. And some of that is, is because some of our nursing homes are full and aren't accepting patients. The hospitals can't discharge, there's not staffing, but, you know, a lot of other things. But some of these patients can actually be handled with social services and other things and partnerships. And we've, we've done this with a lot of patients on a narrower scope, just with partnering with some of our social services like DSHS and Adult Protective Services and Community Action. And sometimes it's just a matter of, they need some food, they need medical help, they need someone to sit down with them and, and plan out, be getting them into a, a home. Sometimes they just want someone to come and talk to them. And these community paramedic programs are finding those services for them. And for instance, like the other night, Saturday, I was on duty and I had a gentleman call at 3:00 in the morning. Well, I can't say that he called, but he was having, you know, cardiac chest pain, 3:00 in the morning, has no phone. We get there, he's sitting in his doorwell, waiting, and he was hollering for two hours. He had a bed, a couch, and a coffee pot. That's all he had there, he had plenty of food. But this gentleman has, he has a fear of, of bills. He doesn't want a ambulance bill, he doesn't want a hospital bill. And here, luckily, a neighbor was getting ready to go to work at 3:00 in the morning and heard him and called us. We were able to transport him, but, you know, it kind of tugs at your, your, your heart to see someone, you know, in their 70s and 80s that's afraid of that bill. And then you start talking to the neighbors and stuff. And here's someone who probably has the option to get some VA help because he's former military. He probably has options with hospice because of some of his medical stuff. So you start reaching out and getting these folks some of the help that's available to them that they've earned. Or we already have places in step that are in place to, to help these folks like we have before with our partnerships with Helping Hands. So there's a lot of things out there that people don't understand and I don't even know all of them. Working with what we call the Skagit A-Team with a whole bunch of these social services kind of opened our eyes to all the things that are out there. But the ripple effects of the things that can help each one of these are, we're, we're learning more and more as we go. And, and of these top 10 patients that have done 172 calls, that's a lot of time and resources that we're putting on our, our members and our, our equipment and stuff. And, and I've got a printout here in front of me. And I've, we've got 40 folks total that make up 440 calls. And at least 150 that we've responded to over five times each, which is, is really not uncommon as we look back at the other years. And how many of those can we, you know, mitigate or, or help and direct in the right direction to cut down the call in? A lot of these folks that have done this, the city of Bellingham has been doing it for a few years. They're having great feedback from it. They're actually adding more folks and adding case managers and, and cutting costs and, in the department. And the hospitals are, are really liking it. We had the ability to sit down with Peace Health this week or two ago, Mayor, and talk to them. And they have some opportunity for some collaboration with North Sound ACH, which is- with North Sound ACH, which is the Accountable Community Health Network. And there's, I guess, nine of these in the state of Washington that are broken up, and they disperse funds for these kind of things, for mental health and social services. And with, depending on the collaboration, what you do as far as closing the loop with some of these folks, there's some funds out there that are available. There's some grants through Peace Health that can help us start up this. But the, the question really was, is, is, in talking to each, and each of you on this, is there interest in us at looking this to, because there's going to be some cost, obviously, with the city. There's going to be some oversight. We're going to have to put some time into developing this. This is not something we can do in the next few months. This is probably a year project. Burlington is looking at doing this maybe this year or early next year. And just kind of seeing what the feedback is from you, if it's worth adding some language to the levy? Is it worth looking at a long-term deal to kind of integrate this into this, this system? And what, what your purview is? I guess that's not the word, but what your thoughts are? And is it worth our time? And do you have any questions?
And I would just add really quickly to that. So the levy that you direct us to bring back, the levy lid lift, looks at four positions. And what we've been talking about is possibly adding one more. That would be a community paramedicine person who would do these types of calls and help us reduce our call volume. So that, that's really what we're trying to get feedback on tonight, is to try to figure out if, if you are open at all to that discussion or if you want to just keep us on the floor.
Councilwoman Burns, go ahead.
Well, the program sounds like a great idea from what you're saying. I'd love to see more. If the numbers can cut down on what you're getting for repeat callers, that sounds like that would save us some money, help free up a lot of hours for people who are currently working. Love to see the numbers for that fifth person, see if that's something that the rest of the council's comfortable with. But I'd be happy to see that move forward.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just, thank you very much for looking into that. Those, those are really awesome numbers that you got. And so that fifth position, would that be somebody who's working with and training the, basically the volunteer cares team? I guess that's a good way to call it. You've got volunteer firefighters. Is that kind of what you're talking about there? Volunteer care team type situation?
No, I, are you talking about like a cert team?
Yeah, somebody that's going out to help respond? Or is that something that you would have that, that fifth person that would be the one to respond to those?
No, this would be a person, like, for instance, we go on the individual, like the other night that I spoke of. We would refer them to this position, and they would go out and set up kind of like an intake. And they would go and find out what their resources are, what, what their needs are, do like an assessment. And then point them in the right direction, whether it be community action, whether it be senior services, Catholic community. See if they have a need to maybe look into placement in a home or, or maybe they need bars for the bathroom to keep them from falling. Maybe it's education on how to get, maybe this guy, maybe getting a cellphone. There's options out there to get free phones for these folks. And, and then kind of going back and revisiting and following up and preventing that second and third and fourth and fifth and sixth call where, where it's, you know, putting the demand on the system.
So it's kind of a post-op follow-up or post-care follow-up and being able to, would that be something where they would look to, it sounds like, like community action or something more than a volunteer to come and put down the bars for the bathrooms if they needed to be lifted? Or something like that?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of folks out there that volunteer to do this. So if, there's funding out there for different agencies that will pay for this and get contractors. And there's volunteer agencies that are willing to add this stuff in there depending on, you know, their home healthcare, their insurances, their, whether they're Medicare, Medicaid, VA. We've actually had some VA folks that have gotten ramps from referrals so that we can get the stretchers and their wheelchairs and stuff in and out. It's just a matter of collaborating and finding what's available.
Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. I am curious, is one person allowed to go out on these calls? Or would we actually be looking at more that could go out? I mean, is this one individual going out and checking on these people by themselves?
Yeah, the, the, most of these plans are, one individual would go out to these calls, so yeah.
Okay. I'd be interested in seeing more information about this program.
Definitely.
Yes, Councilwoman Diamond?
I'm comfortable with that. I think it's a, it's a good thought process to run through. I think it would be really supportive for the, our fire department and the services for our community. So I think we should definitely look into it and see what that number looks like.
And right now, the number we've, we've partnered with the other agencies in the county, we're looking at about $160,000 total operating cost per year. And that's technology, that's administration, that's training, that's uniforms, ER and R funding for equipment. And, I think that's, I mean, there's a, there's a pretty good thought-out list that's, that we have that I can show each, each of you. But $160,000 is about the max of that.
Would there be the, sorry.
I think Councilman, Councilman McGoffin, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say I support the idea of adding a fifth. I think it would really help you guys. One of the questions I had was for vehicles. Do we have an existing vehicle that we would provide to this person? Or would we be looking at purchasing a new vehicle for them?
The thought of, of this position would be, we, we're going to be ordering two command vehicles in the budget already for next year. So we would surplus one of those to this position. And obviously, this is not something we could start probably even this year. There's a lot of contracts and partnerships we'd have to make and at earliest would probably be sometime next year. So we would utilize one of those hand-me-down rigs that we would normally pass on to Public Works or to the motor pool. Sorry, Mark. To accommodate, and then we would put that into an ER and R funding model for the future purchases and replacement.
Good, thank you.
Which is also part of that $160,000 as well.
Thank you. The 160K, is there any chance for grants or county funds, anything?
Definitely. In fact, some of the folks that we've been talking to that are already doing this, they have it as $160,000. But with that ACH funding and the grants that startups and stuff, some of that can be offset by the, up to even all of it, depending on success. But the commitment would have to be, you know, you don't want to bring somebody in that you can't sustainably handle. So we would want to have a commitment to recruit and draw in the right person so we can retain them.
It has to be sustainable. So there's, yes.
So it sounds like with 150 over 5, then that's about maybe 20 to 25% of the overall call volume. Is that here in Seadrwully or is that throughout the county? Or Seadrwully County?
This is, the majority of these folks are with, on our primary response area. So the onesy-twosy ones where we're responding out in the county, we're not seeing those as much.
Okay.
Our top five here are all within either the city limits or right within the outskirts of the city limits.
So do you have data that would be able to see if like, if we did go that program and we're able to reduce that down by half? What financially that would look like? If a third is going out, how much is that third? And how much would half of that third be look like? That seems like that would be something I'd be interested in seeing too.
Maybe you could come sit down with me, because I, I want to figure out that number. That seems like a mathematician deal, but we can probably get it done. With your help.
So thank you for bringing this forward. This is a conversation that we have been having. And I agree with all of you. I think that we just need more information to really pursue the possibility of putting this on the levy and making it sustainable. Maybe the first year, using some grants, especially getting it up and going with all the training and equipment that's going to be required. But thank you, Frank, for your openness, you know, being willing to consider this. Yeah, I thought it was pretty exciting when I first heard about it. So I think it'll work well for us.
Thank you, thank you, folks.
Okay, moving on to staff reports. Charlie, anything else? Okay, council reports. Councilwoman Owen?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. We had a Public Works Committee meeting this evening. Mark gave a really good overview of the projects we're working on. And we also had a lively discussion about the recycling program. At this time, there's no movement towards the council, but they do have some items that they're going to work on for future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Just a couple of things brought to me by constituents. One is hoping for or discussion regarding sidewalk improvements in and around the senior center. That's something that was brought up at the Public Works Meetings as well. And it's up for the next discussion. So that will be addressed, and rightfully so. Another thing that was brought up to me is the traffic coming into Seadrwully off Highway 20 with the new Starbucks. Several constituents have been cut off by cars cutting that double yellow line to get into the Starbucks parking lot where you are supposed to exit and not enter. So I'm just passing that along. If there's signage or something else that can be put up or something, I know it's new, people are excited, but you can't enter that way. And people have been cut off and then cars trying to exit and enter in the same spot, they just don't fit anyways. Passing that along. Other than that, I'm, I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder, tomorrow evening at 5:30, we're having a special planning and business development committee meeting to review the draft economic development action plan. We're going to have EDAS, School District, and hopefully someone else RSVP'd, but we'll see. Thank you, Charlie, for contacting them for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Allen?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have an email for somebody that was requesting a stop sign or a speed limit sign for the Cambridge development area. And I will forward that on to Mark, but I believe that already went through. I wasn't sure, they mentioned speed bumps, but I know that doesn't, that's not realistic with a lot of our first responder vehicles and whatnot. But, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I only have really one thing to report tonight, and that is, we received notice from Mr. John Coleman, our Building and Planning Director, who is taking another position with Anna Cordis. So he, we're going to be losing him and putting out application, looking for somebody to take his place. I believe that John will be leaving in about three to four weeks. So we have three or four weeks with him. And we will, of course, be recruiting at that time, or trying to recruit. And maybe we even bring in somebody who can intern for us if we can't find somebody to fill that position. So anyway, when you see John, congratulate him. This is a wonderful opportunity. It is, I believe, in the Planning Department there in Anna Cordis, and I think he'll be working with the mayor there. It's a good opportunity for him. And we're excited for him, but also saddened by the loss. So, yep. He said it was just too good an opportunity to pass up, and I can't say as I blame him. All right. So that is all that I have tonight. Moving on to public comments. I'll open it up right now at 7:02. For anybody who'd want to come forward and do public comments, please state your name and address. Try to keep it to three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to share? Hi, Corinne.
Hello, my name is Corinne Hamburg. I live at 620 Township Street in Seadrwully. This is just more of a thank you to the police department. This last week, we had a mental health emergency in our part of town. And the police department did a fabulous job ensuring that everyone, even neighbors felt safe and were well taken care of. The county responded as well. And everyone worked really well together to ensure that it went as smoothly as possible. So thank you to your department very much.
Thank you, Corinne. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, see no hands, 7:03. I will close public comment, and we will move on to new business. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move right in, jump into, right into the new business. And the first is the Memorial Park Sidewalk Construction Project. And Mr. Freiberger, I believe you are taking this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So as you're aware of, we are working on improvements to the Memorial Park. Included in that is a sidewalk to enclose both the new play area and the spray park. And we closed bids on that, and the low bid was from P&amp;P Excavating of Seadrwully. It was under our engineer's estimate, and we are recommending award of that. Just to give you a little update on the overall project, it's, it's going pretty well. We're still on track to be finishing that about the 1st of July. Nathan's crew today did the grading to prepare the lawn areas for topsoil. That should be going in in the next week or two. And we also closed bids on a hydroseed contract and on the fencing contract, which are both under my signature authority. So we'll be executing those contracts as well. I think that's the last ones we needed. And so it's, it's moving along pretty well. We have a little bit of regulatory stuff we're working through with the Health Department. On the spray park itself should be resolved, we hope, by the end of this week. And we'll get the restroom going up as soon as that little issue is dealt with. Anyway, back to the memo. We are recommending award of the contract for the sidewalk and sidewalk construction project for Memorial Park to P&amp;P Excavating LLC of Bellingham, Washington for the amount of $96,367.73. And we'd appreciate your, your action on that tonight, if you're willing to do that.
All right, thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed in there that you've done business with them before. It's been satisfactory, I'm assuming, since you've taken the bid?
They're one of our repeat on-call contractors. They've fulfilled that role for us, I don't think, three or four years, the last three or four years.
Thank you.
I am. All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, so, thank you, thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Owen, second by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, thank you. Okay, second item tonight is actually, it's ordinance number 204523. And this is repealing and replacing the Seadrwully Municipal Code, Chapter 2.44, Seadrwully Arts Commission. and replacing the Seidro Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 2.44, Seidro Woolley Arts Commission, as you all know, we have been bringing on an, we have an arts commission that we are putting together, I have been working with them to put together their mission statement, we also put together a new ordinance, we actually went through several cities and found one, actually pulled from a couple of them, but we found one that we really, really liked, went through it section by section and implemented what we thought would be good for our community. I want you to note that one thing that has been stated by the council here and also by several constituents that we have heard from is that people are looking to really beautify our community and that is part of the Seidro Woolley Arts Commission statement, is that they seek to beautify the community as well as support the vitality of the local artists in the visual, literary and the performing arts, so good group of local citizens who have come together, so what I'm asking for is a motion to adopt ordinance number 204423 and that would repeal the ordinance that was put into place back in 2012, I believe was when it was put into place and that Seidro Woolley Municipal Code and that was Chapter 244, so any questions or do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2045-23, repealing and replacing Municipal Code, Chapter 2-44.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, second by Councilman McGoffin, any discussion questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you, I know they're looking forward to working with the council and working with the city on this. All right, our third and last item tonight is the, it's interlocal agreement with Skagit County regarding the allocation of expenditure of housing sales tax, it's House Bill 1590 funding, and Charlie, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson, members of the council, so this is an interlocal agreement with Skagit County and this is a follow-up on our resolution discussion that the council approved, 111923, which was approved on March 8th, so this particular interlocal agreement, the major change from our prior discussion was that when it was presented to us by the county, it's a one-year interlocal agreement as opposed to a three-year interlocal agreement, so that's one thing we had talked about before, otherwise, it allocates 40% of the city's 1590 funds, which is approximately 100,000 per year, actually, it's been a little bit less than that historically, that's why we put 40% into the agreement over to the county's NOFA process, which you received some briefings about previously, and then those funds would be allocated out for housing needs. The interlocal agreement breaks that down a little bit more into specifically what Skagit County will do, they'll administer the, the funds through the NOFA process, including contracting with partners and reporting funding outcomes to us, they'll continue advocacy efforts with Housing Authority of Skagit County to secure housing vouchers for the Martha's Place Permanent Supportive Housing Project and they'll partner with the operators of First Step and Martha's Place while seeking other outside funding sources to secure their long-term sustainability, this goes through the end of June 2024 and if the council is so inclined, we'd appreciate a motion this evening, it's really a follow-on on the resolution that you approved that indicated that you were interested in, in doing this.
All right, any questions, go ahead, Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, well, I'm glad it's a one-year to try out and see how that works and I'm glad that that would give them the opportunity to seek other funding depending how that goes, so, yeah, thank you for, for working on that.
All right, thank you, yes.
I too wanted to express my, my happiness that you decided to switch it to one-year for us so that we could have that opportunity if we should see issues later on, I like the program though, I think it looks like a great idea and I believe it's going to work well, so.
North Star determined the one-year, there was a lot of discussion between one-year, three-year or five-year and actually it was the North Star that determined that, yeah, so, which we agree is, is a good start, yeah.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Okay, any other questions? Councilwoman McGoffin?
One that kind of came into mind just now, I didn't ask you before, it states that you're the representative, do you expect to spend a lot of time if, on this agreement, like from your day job compared to how much you'll be working with the county?
I do not, the county's administering a lot of this, the mayor's sitting on the North Star, I'm going to get the name of your, the committee wrong, but essentially the steering committee, so they're doing policy-related decisions related to North Star, this, my contact here is more about just administering this contract, so if there's any issue about billing that comes up or something like that, I'll get involved in that, I'll also be working as will the mayor, I'm sure, and making sure that we get the reporting that we need to the council so that you can see how the money's being spent and decide if that's appropriate as we look at possible future extensions or contracts.
Cool, thank you.
We're not expending a lot of payroll then on people administering any of this, right? That was the concern I had last year, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the county told us that it's really zero extra overhead, all of our money is going directly to service delivery, they're already doing this work, so this is just more money for them to, to work with and that's not a lot of extra effort for them.
Yeah, I, I still stand by my position in the last meeting, I really don't see the point in putting money into projects and services that have a 0% success rate, as one of them was specifically noted and funds would be allocated in that direction, taxpayers' dollars are to be used in successful programs, it's not to say that something couldn't change my mind if a program was successful, however, I don't think it's wise to use taxpayers' dollars in any way, shape or form going towards projects with a 0% success rate and that were never allocated to be sustainable to begin with, which, I mean, in presentation to our council in years past, were, were not sustainable, so it's not a surprise that it's not sustainable at this point and is currently publicized in our papers.
Any other comment? Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, I'm trying to find the right page.
Page 58?
Oh, I'd like to make the motion, interlocal agreement with Skagit County regarding the allocation expenditure of housing sales tax for Housing Bill 1590 funding.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, second by Councilwoman McGoffin, to do as Councilwoman Burns has stated, it's an interlocal agreement between the allocation of the expenditure of housing tax dollar 1590 funding, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I just wanted to have a quick discussion on Councilwoman's point because it's my understanding that for the zero-success programs, you can go and have an impact on where that money goes, right? So if there's one that's not successful?
There is a, there is, so there is a, it goes through several committees and these committees rate all of them, all the housing, the rental agreement, all the, oh gosh, what am I trying to say here, the, the work that the social workers do with the individuals, the behavior health, they look at all those programs that put in for funding, not all of them put in for funding, but those that put in for funding and because we're down half as much as what we had last year, there'll only be half as much to give out, so, so for as many that have come in, there'll be those that'll be eliminated, so it'll go through one group, which I said on one of the committees today, and we probably eliminated half, at least half, of the people who put in for the funding and it'll go to another group and then it'll go to another group before it's finally decided, so I've already had my say in it, as have the other mayors and other community leaders, so, yeah, yeah.
I share in Councilwoman Diamond's concern of zero-success programs and I think that was kind of part of this whole agreement is that we put faith in you guys to vet those out.
So that's something that actually, especially when it's all said and done, I'd be excited to actually share with you, the majority of the money's going to both house families, rental assistance, putting people into housing, getting them the rent that they need, getting them the social services that they need, doing work with, with counselors, that's where the bulk of the money's going, so those are really successful programs, so, yeah.
Just add, when they report back to us, we're asking the county to really focus on outcomes and outcome measures in their performing, in their, their performance reporting, so we'll, we'll hear some, some, some volume measures, but, but really, we want to know what the outcomes are, that's what we've directed to them and that's going to tell us whether or not they're being successful, so an example of one of those measures could be placing people in permanent housing, you know, number, percentage, that type of stuff, so that's the kind of data we're asking to get back so that you can decide going forward whether or not this is worth.
And what's perfect about one-year is that you don't like it, you don't have to do it again, yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask, on that committee where 50% of those got pushed aside, were those, I'm sure there's a lot of reasons that went into that, but were they the lower-performing ones that were automatically, and the other mayors obviously had a similar consensus as you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate hearing that that's how the meeting went today and that was my understanding in this program was that it was going to be performance-based and that was going to be something where it, it works out on who's doing well, we're going to keep funding them and make sure we're feeding the right groups.
Yeah, yeah, and just so, so kind of just, if I may, so it's, you look across the board, you're looking at the youth, the children, you're looking at the families, you're looking at the vets, so you're looking at different groups of people and those pockets of money, so that, that's what you're looking at, so that every, every group is getting something, yeah, so, thank you, Charlie. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all right, so Councilman Owen, Diamond and Kestie in opposition, thank you, motion passes.
All right, I think that is it for tonight, there were some excellent reports, by the way, under your information, excellent reports that were submitted by both the fire, the PD and also Public Works and then also the information about the Economic Development Focus Group that actually Councilwoman Burns referenced.
Question on that?
Yes.
I was just going to ask, how did we come up with the people that were invited to it, because I have several business owners that were wondering why they weren't maybe invited to a roundtable? Who picked those people and how did they end up there?
The committee members all invited any business owners that they could reach, I actually reached out to probably three times as many as I actually got to talk to and even less showed up, so that's how we pursued that.
I could add as well that I noticed one out through the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Okay, so if you have a chance to take a look at those, also want to remind you, as already has been stated by Councilwoman Burns, that on the 18th, we are going to have the discussion regarding the forum that we are having on the 19th, a week from today, very excited about that, looking forward to hearing the public's input and I hope you all will have opportunity to make it, I hope you will be able to join us. All right, with that, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.